I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee of the School Committee to order this meeting is a meeting of the whole. And at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Papil to do the social emotion learning curriculum map.
I'd just like to say good evening and thank you for this opportunity to talk about the social emotional curriculum map. There are a lot of people to thank for this curriculum map, including this committee. Your commitment to supporting social emotional learning and mental health and wellness is greatly appreciated. The superintendent and the assistant superintendent have provided leadership and support to the wonderful principals, counselors, school psychologists, and educators who've been passionate about giving students the space, time, to foster a sense of well-being, belonging, and community. I know that as a district, we've made huge strides in ensuring that there is a comprehensive SEL curriculum map. Here you see the five areas of SEL according to the CASL, which is the collaborative for academic and social emotional learning. I know you've heard that a million times. They are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. The five areas of the CASL approach to SEL are the standards which the curriculum map has been aligned. Those are the pillars of SEL. Also, you see on this graphic, it shows how it goes from student learning to classroom learning, school-wide social emotional learning, and the home-school connection. That is why we have frameworks and blended practices in our approach to SEL. I'm going to talk about that for a moment. For instance, restorative principles and practices and culturally appropriate relationships and interactions that have been used in schools over the past few years, particularly in classrooms, are being done to create a culture of care in Quincy Public Schools. We're trying to foster a care, a culture of care. Research shows that there needs to be a sense of connectedness and belonging and nurturing relationships between teachers and students so that there can be an increase in students' positive experience of schooling. The crucial, this is crucial to SEL. Multi-tiered systems of support are important to ensure that the climate and culture to support and provide more individualized interventions for students. We want every student to have access to a space where they can be, they can develop SEL, the skills that they need to feel safe and supported. Since 2021, the district has been awarded over $410,000 in funding for the SEL Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness Grant. That grant funding was the seed money for adding two school adjustment counselors at each high school, which the superintendent and assistant superintendent, along with the school committee, have continued to support. The first round of funding allowed our team from QPS to attend a CASL conference through Harvard. So counselors, health educators, and myself attended that conference. And that provided us an opportunity to strategically plan with some of the best SEL opportunities out there. The next round of funding allowed the district to purchase Open Parachute, which is the SEL platform that is accessible to all classrooms and has been transformative in implementing a district-wide SEL plan. We're able to fund a partnership with Walker Therapeutics for school-based counselors that is continuing to grow and is now serving over 100 students within Quincy Public Schools. This year, we're able to continue to fund Open Parachute, professional development with Suffolk University for restorative practices, the continued funding of a clinician partnership, an exciting new mentoring program through Big Brother, Big Sister, and we will be sharing that Big Brother, Big Sister initiative with you at a later date. I just want to talk about the partnerships that we have and how impactful they've been. We also have partnerships with organizations that were funded through sources. Some of Walker's small group interventions in professional development has been funded through grant funding through Milton Hospital. We have Trauma-Informed Practices Professional Development going on this year that's been really outstanding for the counselors. We have a partnership with the NAMM Project, which is a free service to us. The NAMM Project invited me to testify at a legislative briefing this month to advocate for funding. It was an honor to be the first school district to be invited to do so. They've provided suicide prevention presentations with young adult peer presentations that have been hugely successful. I've included the NAMM Project in the SEL curriculum map for all grade eight and grade 10 students. The NAMM Project has provided professional development for educators as well. I mentioned the Big Brother and Big Sister partnership that will be a pilot at Quincy High School with incoming freshman class and continue with each incoming class. That includes a full-time coordinator from Big Brother, Big Sister. They will do all the recruitment of the Bigs and sponsor all of their events. We've established a partnership with Hope and Comfort, which you saw at the last school committee meeting, that they're so impactful and we're so grateful for that partnership. Bay State Community Services is also a wonderful partner. We just signed a letter of support so that we can complete the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which gives us good data on some of the things that we need to make sure we include in our SEL planning. They also have reached out to me because they have another opportunity through another grant, so I'm meeting with Darice Cox and her team this Friday. I added to the slide before the meeting about the Aspire Grant. I'm really excited. I've been working with Aspire, and they have acquired funding to give us a clinician next year to split between North Quincy High School and Quincy High School, which is an amazing opportunity for us to get a free clinician so kids won't fall through the cracks. You know, if a child, you know, has had a mental health crisis and they don't have therapy, that person will see them right away. They'll refer families for home-based services, get them into the hub, therapeutic mentoring. So I feel like that's going to have a huge impact for us. They can also do crisis evals when, if needed, right at the site. So we have a lot of exciting, and I, I'm talking about all these partnerships and these organizations as it relates to SEL. SEL is our first tier, right? So like, when I'm writing grants, it's always combined with social emotional wellness and mental health wellness is always combined with SEL. And so it's part of our tiered support. And we're really relying on Open Parachute to, you know, we supplement with other things, things that we've traditionally had. So if you look at the curriculum map, you'll see that, you know, you'll still see like steps to respect in there and things like that. There are other resources that we've traditionally used that are good. But as the SEL to be district-wide in every classroom really has to be Open Parachute because it's so accessible. I'm really excited about our continued partnership with Open Parachute. Dr. Watson has agreed to do some professional development and do a book talk, so I'm going to buy the book for the student support staff and teachers that are interested. So on that November 7th date, she'll be there virtually to do like a guided discussion around her book, which is really pragmatic and really helpful for educators in, you know, holding those discussions, understanding, you know, their impact with their interactions with students. So it's just a lot of exciting things are happening for the district, and I am so appreciative that this committee values social emotional learning for our kids. I think it's been really helpful. So with that, I will take any questions.
Questions, anyone? Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. That was really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. When we first started the partnership with Walker Therapeutic, I know a lot of families reached out and they were able to find therapists for their children very, pretty, pretty easily, actually, from what I heard from people. Are they still having the availability that they had back then when we first were reaching out to them, or are they starting to not be able to have as much availability anymore?
So they've definitely expanded because they, they just started at like the high schools, and we had like office hours built into the grants, like when I wrote the grants, you know, so that if there was an emergency situation where someone needed to be seen right away, they could be seen right away. So we had office hours, plus then they were billing insurance. And so that, I think there were only two or maybe three clinicians to start, and that has expanded to about six clinicians. And they're in most buildings throughout the district. They have acquired a waiting list. Everywhere in the world, there's a waiting list, and we were so lucky to have that partnership. We didn't have a huge waiting list for kids. So what we've done is I've been meeting with them all along to say like, you know, this family, maybe they can't get individual counseling that's school-based right now, but what about, because they have a hub too. So what about your home-based services where they, they can go to the home and do some family work at the home, their therapeutic mentors? So those kids that were not able to have school-based counseling or they can't access that, we look at the other services offered by Walker. And we're going to continue three more years with that grant and that partnership moving forward. And they do small group interventions. Their PD has been outstanding. They did a parent night for us last night on anxiety. We will be posting that. Really good information. The follow-up is June 4th for them. So they've been an outstanding partner for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
The partnership with Aspire is great too, and they're similar to Walker, right? Are they a mental health service? This is really complicated, right? All of this stuff, it's way above what I'm trained for, and this is what you guys do. And it's amazing. I think we have an in-depth, an incredible service that we give the students in our system. It's, you know, everywhere and every industry right now, mental health and therapists are so hard to, to get to that the fact that we can provide this for our students is really commendable because I know that outside of the, the school system and in the industry that I'm working in, it's really difficult for people to get therapy when they need it. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And I think that at some point, maybe at the end of next year, you know, once we have a whole year, it might be nice for us to see the number of students that are serviced through the year with our partners and, you know, individuals within our, our staff as well, like the individuals that are served that are having issues with social emotional issues, you know? It would just might be a nice way to, I, I see here, you saw like 100 for Walker student, the students that see the Walker group. So just to get a handle on, you know, what a big issue that it is that we're having just everywhere in society in itself, you know? So thank you for the work you're doing because it's really difficult work. I know that, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say a few things. We have come so far, Laura, we have come so far with this. Not that people weren't doing stuff before, but there was no documentation and there were gaps. People were doing stuff, but not everybody was doing things. But having this curriculum map really helps us to ensure that all of our kids are being seen and treated at least in Tier One, and that's incredible. I love Open Parachute. I really do love it. I think it's, I, we've seen a few videos of it, and it was amazing. I have one question for you. The map is terrific. It really is. You can see from the grade level, every single thing that's happening and where it's happening. But my one question is, I, I really, really love the idea of the adjustment counselors. That was one of our goals, was to try to get them into the middle school. But I don't think the people at home know the difference between an adjustment counselor and a guidance counselor. And I'm wondering, at some point, we could either have a presentation on teaching and learning or, or someplace else, where people could just talk to an adjustment counselor and get a better idea of what their work is, because I think it's so important.
Sure. That sounds great.
Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the presentation. Not so much a question, just a couple of comments, observation. I, I, I know we've gone through a difficult period as a society the last few years, and it's had a detrimental effect on the mental health of our kids. But I, where is that fine line where caudling too much and not really preparing them for the world where when they graduate? That concerns me. Now, I'm not saying there aren't kids that need help, but there's also kids that need to kick in the ass, and it's, and I just think that the caudling is a little too. I remember walking the halls of North and teachers would throw me in the locker, won't mention any names. "Coke, what are you doing?" Recruiting classes, you know? I'm not suggesting we go to those, those, those times, but it seems to me that I'm concerned, let me say that, that as these kids graduate and move on, are we really preparing them for life? Life isn't easy out there. It's not all roses, and you're not going to be caudled. So I understand there's the need for certain kids, but I also, I'd love to know where that fine line is.
Yeah, so, you know, I would say, you know, if the presentation, you know, through Walker about anxiety, it was all about how you stand up to anxiety. Like, everybody experiences anxiety, right? And the messaging really is about hope, like, you can do this, you can handle this. You know, I think we need to really build on kids' strengths, and that's why I like Open Parachute so much. Like, they talk about natural challenges that we all face and resilience and grit. And I think, you know, that's kind of what you're saying. Like, we need to prepare kids to be able to say like, "I can break this down, I can do this, I know how to critically think even when I'm upset or I'm escalated, I can calm myself down." Because I agree with you, we need to make sure that kids aren't staying home because of their anxiety. They need to be in school. You know, I do not appreciate online learning. I don't think, you know, the virtual schools are a good idea. I, I, I think that we need to really, because in a way, you're saying, you're right, you can't do this, you need to stay home. Like, that is a disservice to our, our young people, and I like the sense of Open and Parachute. It's about moving forward, overcoming, you know? It might be a struggle and it might be hard, but at every end of every lesson, there's a story where the student was able to overcome whatever challenge there was. And I think that's the messaging, the healthy, the healthy messaging that we need to send.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow that up, Mrs. Hoobley and I had a very similar concern about bullying. You know, when you teach the kids about bullying too much, they think everything is bullying, and he's trying to find his fine line between making sure people are not being bullied and they don't think that every little thing that happens to them is being bullied, is bullying. So I know it's a difficult balance, so I appreciate your point. Mr. Bogoli.
Just a question about staffing. I know we hired adjustment counselors, and they supplemented our regular guidance staff. Can you give me some numbers at both high schools? In terms of staffing?
So it was just, you know, that the grant money gave seed money for one school adjustment counselor at each high school.
Okay. And how many regular guidance people do you have?
Okay, no, wait a minute. Sorry. Just that, that number has not changed. So I think it's seven and six.
Guidance counselor?
Yeah, maybe more. There might be more. I'm sorry, can I get you that number? Like, it's, it's around there. It has not changed. We've kept the number of staff the same. We did, you all, did put an adjustment counselor at Southwest Middle School in the budget. I didn't talk about that because I didn't, that wasn't seed money from my grants.
And just in, in terms of their responsibilities, they do groups. Does all, do all the guidance people do groups? Or are they just individual as needed, or scheduling, or what's their, what's their role at the high school in particular?
Yeah, so they all have duties, okay? So some, someone might be in charge of like AP testing. Someone might be in charge, like I know Sherri Eldridge does a grief group with Karen McPartland. There's healthy decision groups that are done. There are, you know, classroom lessons through Open Parachute about transitioning to the real world from, you know, 12th grade. So they all do something, whether it's, you know, academic-based, but they all have duties, and they, those change up every year. But some counselors really have their niche, and so like the grief group is something that Sherri has always done. And I know like the same at North. You know, they have, Rebecca Fidler is a clinician that we've used over the past, I think, four years. And she, you know, kids that are, you know, caught vaping or struggling with vaping and healthy decision-making, she does a group with the health interventionists at each high school, and she's phenomenal. She also does other prevention work with us too. So, you know, we've funded her through grant money, so there's lots of different things happening, you know, depends on things that are happening like in the building too. Like, if there's an issue that's come up, then they'll address that in a small group.
I was just thinking about their, their day-to-day responsibilities in terms of scheduling or...
Scheduling, individual, you know, counseling, you know, SST, dropout prevention, you know, they, they do college recommendations, college applications, like it's just, they're, those guidance offices are very, very busy places.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill.
So just to clarify, Open Parachute is social emotional learning. So it's basically just like a, a program to teach kids how to deal with everyday anxiety issues, testing, coming to school, you go into a new classroom, like, it's more about that.
Yes.
For the general public.
Yes.
Just to kind of deep dive. And the deep diving, the Walker and Aspire and adjustment counselors are there to service kids who really have strong needs and therapeutic needs, right?
Correct.
So they're really two different things.
Correct.
So our social emotional learning is the Open Parachute, daily issues that might come up. And then if teachers or school staff or someone in a building identifies a student that might have a deeper issue that needs to be addressed, then we have this partnerships or the, you know, the adjustment counselors to deal with those things. So as far as like Walker Therapeutics, for an example, having 100 students out of 10,000 to see them is, you know, it's not like it's a school-wide, you know, 10,000 students that we're trying to treat. We're treating students who are really in need of extra help.
Correct.
So I think that's the, you know, if we talk about like too much focus on kids' emotional issues, it's really not that. It's every day, it's just regular everyday issues, and then the 100 students are plus that we service in a more deeper dive is a small number in comparison to what we have in the system. So that, that's, I think, you know, just to kind of clarify that a little bit in, in what we're doing on a daily basis, right?
Yeah, that, that's exactly it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're all set on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And the next item, the next item on the agenda is the professional development update. Mr. Marani and Ms. Quin and Ms. Vaughn to report.
Good evening, everybody. So with all of the previous presentations throughout this year, there's been many mentions of professional development. So we thought it'd be appropriate just to give a brief update on the focuses of professional development, not just this year, but also where we plan to go in the, in the near future for, for next year. Before we talk about those focuses, just want to dive into what we mean when we say professional development. I think everybody is aware of the term, but there's components to it that we value whenever we're planning professional development. So the definition up there, professional development is ongoing education or training designed to increase an educator's skills or knowledge or gain new competencies. That's the DESI-based definition. When we plan professional development, we're trying to make sure, regardless of the specific content area, regardless of the objective of that professional development session, we want to make sure that it's a needs-based opportunity for educators. So we want to make sure that it's building on previous professional development. So we work very hard at making sure we're looking at the current PD and saying, okay, where does this go next? What does this build to? So it's not scattered. It's very hard to keep it focused because there's so many important issues. However, it's certainly a priority as we design upcoming professional development opportunities. We make sure always that it's a collaborative process. That's not just during the, the professional development, but it's also in the development of PD. So as we work together to design this, there's a lot of stakeholders at place to, to make sure that we're serving multiple needs across the board. Later on, towards the end of this presentation, I'll show you from an educator's standpoint what they see when they learn about their upcoming PD. Also, just making sure that as, as educators walk out of any PD, that they have, you know, tools in the toolkit, that they can walk out and actually take something into their classroom, into their office, and use it. So making sure that it's pragmatic, making sure that it provides effective models. So there's a lot that's been going on with CKLA, illustrative mathematics, and you can't just walk into that and expect teachers to know how to carry that out. So they have to see it first and get to know it and see it modeled. So we certainly prioritize that. And making sure it's expert-led, and I think that goes without saying, but I think it's important to note that some of our best PDs have been led by QPS educators. So in many cases, they are the seasoned experts that are sharing their best practices with their colleagues throughout, throughout the district. And then, of course, just making sure that we have a strong feedback system in place. So for us to get back to, okay, what is needed next, where do we need to go? We have to make sure that there's often or always an opportunity for educators to give us the feedback about that PD. So every PD ends with a feedback form that we look at pretty closely, with pretty, pretty intense scrutiny, just to make sure that where we go next is what, in fact, those educators need and want. And then also, we want to give those educators, those participants, time and space within that PD to reflect, to think about whatever it is that they're learning, and ask themselves, okay, how can I adapt this? How can I change it to make it mine and have it work within their space, whether that be a classroom or an office? I mentioned that it's a collaborative process, so before I hand it off to Ms. Vaughn, I just want to acknowledge the Quincy Public Schools Professional Development Planning Team. So we're comprised of 24 total members. That's across all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We try to meet two to three times per year, so this year, so far, we've met twice with, with a goal of trying to get one more meeting in before the end of this school year. And the objective essentially is to have all of these stakeholders at the table, having a voice in the conversation, to make sure that it is needs-based. There's so many needs out there, and that's why we need a lot of representatives to be able to voice those needs. So that's certainly a crucial factor in all of this professional development design is the collaboration that goes into, into the planning. But with that, as we shift gears into the different core academic areas, I'll hand it off to Ms. Vaughn.
Thanks, Mr. Marani. Hi, everyone. It's great to see everybody. I'm Bridgette Vaughn, the district coordinator of literacy. Thanks for having me. So in the next four to five slides or so, we'd like to give you an update on some of the specifics of professional development in each content area. This update will include highlights from this year, as Mr. Marani said, as well as a sneak peek at what we're planning for next school year. So I have the privilege of sharing these with you for English, Language Arts, and Reading. And I had a hard time narrowing down what the highlights were. There was so much offered this year, so please know that this is not an exhaustive list, and there was a lot more that was offered. So in grades K through 5, we're in Phase 2 of our HQIM. That's a Massachusetts term for implementing new curriculum, high-quality instructional materials. So we're in Phase 2 of that implementation and rollout. Last year, in Phase 1, we did a, we had a transition from mechanical use of our new core program to routine use, so the training aligned with that. Phase 2 this year involved the transition from routine use into refinement. So as such, we designed our training intentionally around that. This year, with your support, for which we are very grateful for, and with grant funding, we provided all educators in grades K to 5 with 28 full days of site-based coaching sessions with Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA. We also provided CKLA sessions on, specific to multilingual learners, small group instruction, writing, and assessments. We formed a team of educators with two to three representatives from all schools to align and revise our standards-based report cards. Another 24 educators, myself included, took advantage of Orton-Gillingham training, which includes seven full days of coursework in August, three full-day seminars which occur throughout the school year, and an eight-month practicum. And I know I speak on behalf of all in this OG, QPS OG cohort when I say thank you to Dr. Perkins, Superintendent Malvi, Mayor Koch, and all members of the school committee for continuing to support Orton-Gillingham certification for educators. Other highlights include more in-depth training in early literacy screening, particularly in education and use of progress monitoring. We had presentations for reading at ELA Educators in grades 6 through 8 around adding more diverse and complex text to our collections so that students can, to quote Rudine Sims-Bishop, who is referred to as the mother of multicultural literature, use books as mirrors, windows, and sliding doors. In alignment with our district goal to improve student outcomes, we trained 65 K to 8 teachers in a program called The Writing Revolution. And this is a book by Judith Hockman and Natalie Wexler. And if you notice on the... And if you notice on the slides there, there are some bullets that have asterisks next to those. The Writing Revolution is one where we will continue with this training in the coming years as well, to train more teachers in this. Several K-8 educators recently attended the Massachusetts Reading Association Conference. They also had a lunch and learn at the Verve Hotel in Natick with Science of Reading, the podcast host Susan Lambert. That was pretty exciting for me, the educators, because we listen to this podcast pretty regularly, a couple of times a week. And for teachers in grades six through 12, we had sessions in November and April on artificial intelligence with Naomi Caselli from Boston University. Okay, so for 2425, sneak peek here, we're going to enter phase three of our K-5 HQIM, High Quality Instructional Material Implementation Plan, where educators will transition from refinement to skillful use of our core program. So here, they'll become experts and be able to help us, others maximize on their impact on student learning. Want to back up for just a second. I forgot that we included all stakeholders in professional development this year, which I made a notation of, and had three parent academies that also community members could join, on some of the same things I just mentioned, early literacy screening, the science of reading, and the core program, Core Knowledge Language Arts. So for 2425, when we're moving into that refinement to skillful use, we're going to have sessions on dyslexia from the National Council on Improving Literacy, ENSEL, sessions with the Reading League on vocabulary, writing, morphology. The Professional Training Institute from the Commonwealth Learning Center, that is the provider that we use for the Orton-Gillingham training, but we will, they also do other training as well. We'll continue with Amplify CKLA and M-Class, which is that early literacy screening tool that we use. We'll continue with training on that. And as I mentioned, we're actually having Dr. Wexler, the author of this book, come during our November 5th day and worked with her. And she is not charging us, we just have to buy books. So we, we agreed that we would purchase 100 books. I think we will get more than 100 attendees, but she just asked that we purchase the book, which makes sense for the training. And then, as, from a suggestion from one of our ELA teachers at the middle school, we're just working with Dr. Jared Amato. He is the author of Just Read It, and that's about maximizing your literacy block in middle school, independent reading, and with that maximizing literacy block, how do we incorporate writing, which is, I think, going to be, continue to be our district goal for next year as well. One other piece that I wanted to mention is that this summer in August, for two half-days, we're going to have sessions for either new educators or optional for teachers that might be already in their classrooms, setting up and so forth, to do more in-depth structured literacy, literacy sessions, like syllable division, morphology. And this structured literacy course is kind of customized or designed for us as like a mini Orton-Gillingham. So these sessions will be based on Orton-Gillingham principles that most educators are interested in, in, in reading in ELA, but they may not be able to commit to a full year or eight-month practicum and all of that, what that involves. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Quinn. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So for this year, in math, our focus has revolved around problem-based learning tasks. These opportunities do not offer immediate solutions. Instead, the problems provide the chance for students to build conceptual understanding. The students are in the driver's seat, and the teachers facilitate by planning rich tasks and then guide the students through the process. These tasks give the students a sense of purpose, that their ideas matter, and that there are many ways to get solutions. This was reflected in the work that illustrative mathematics consultant Maureen O'Connell did with each individual elementary school, as well as with the fifth-grade math teachers at Point Webster and Southwest. During our elementary system-wide afternoons, we continued the work that Maureen was doing and focused specifically on teacher moves during lesson warm-ups. These routines get all students participating in their learning. Problem-based learning goes beyond the standards and integrates social and emotional skills. We saw this as middle school teachers work with Molly Vokey and use practices from building thinking classrooms that fostered teamwork and communication. Our implementation of ST Math allowed students to work independently to complete their own journey through problem-based puzzles. Through trial and error, students build deep conceptual understanding as they work to get GG across the screen. And as we look ahead to next year, K-5 teachers will work on refining their practices using illustrative mathematics. We will continue to focus on inclusive practices and teacher moves. Target areas will include activity, time, and centers. Math consultant Kristin Acosta, along with returning favorites Molly Vokey and Annalise Record, will be presenting at our Second Annual Professional Day of Learning. Kristin will share her work on clothesline math, which brings the number line to life using movable number cards and a string. A team of middle school math teachers will be formed to look at new, high-quality core math resources and will ultimately make recommendations to the superintendent for implementation during the 2025-26 school year. And we are very excited to let you know that six more schools have been awarded the ST Math Grant through the 1-8 Foundation, Lincoln Hancock, Snug Harbor, Clifford Marshall, Parker, Marymount, and Squanum officially became part of Cohort Seven of the 1-8 Foundation's ST Math Grant. Last month, school champions, along with their principals, attended a full-day conference where they learned more about the program. And a special shout-out to Megan Quigley from Point Webster, who represented Quincy as a member of the multi-district panel of educators who shared their experiences implementing the program, as well as the challenges they faced and conquered during their first year of the rollout, because Point Webster and Southwest rolled it out last year. All our schools, all the schools that are participating in the 1-8 grant will continue with their learning next year with multiple-site-based professional development. And I'll now pass the presentation back to Mr. Marani, who's going to talk about science and social studies.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. So when we look at science professional development for this current school year, as Ms. Vaughn mentioned, this list is not an exhaustive list. There's quite a bit, especially when you look at the recent Professional Day of Learning. The variety of offerings across not just science, but all the other areas is pretty extensive. And so that's an important component, obviously, where we want to make sure that the educators participating have some choice in what they want to go deeper in. So when we look at science, at the elementary level, we brought in our Engineering as Elementary kits. So this is our way of trying to get more hands-on science learning in the classroom. This promotes inquiry-based learning, which is very important as we look at the DESI educational vision as far as performance task-style prompts that our students will encounter, building a STEM-based lesson library, looking into the what, the why, and the how of meaningful learning, and so on and so forth. I won't go through the list, you can all see that. What I will say is the main focus has been kind of two-part. One, as I mentioned, making sure that we're helping our students and our teachers offer a learning setting that's an inquiry-based learning approach. So prompting students to ask their own questions and then explore how they can find their own answers. And that back and forth, kind of, I would, I would describe it more as coaching, right? Where teachers are coaching students through a particular problem. So all of these items here absolutely reinforce that. But the other part, the other main focus here is, and I've mentioned this at a few previous presentations on the different assessments that we have, the expanded pilot for STE, is performance tasks. So our students are definitely going to encounter more and more prompts that are multi-part, that are storyline-based, where there's a through line. There might be, let's say, 10 questions, all towards one subject. And that subject could be based on a simulation, where maybe they have to look at different weather changes and what happens to the clouds when certain weather patterns are adjusted. So it's very important that we're giving students the tools to feel comfortable in playing with those data points, and that's where RPD comes in, giving teachers the skillset and the tools to be able to do that and support that. The other part of this, too, is also making sure that our curriculum is up to date. When we talk about a shift in assessment, it then prompts us to say, okay, let's look at our existing curriculum, which is SAVIS, and saying, where should this go? Is this now, is this still current? Or should we be going in a different direction? So this year, we've really been letting our PD ask ourselves that question and explore different curricula. Next year, so when we look at 2425, we're going to go deeper into the Open Say Ed curriculum. That's a very effective, very useful curriculum that allows students the opportunity to learn their content, whatever the specific units are, in an inquiry-based manner. So the content is already designed in that way, thus making it easier for teachers to implement in that manner. However, what I will say is we're also looking at what materials can supplement Open Say Ed. So what hands-on materials? We need students to have the opportunity to really get their hands-on materials, do different lab experiments, but also encounter digital simulations. So that's something that they're definitely going to be encountering as they take on this new pilot, once it becomes operational. So we need students to be able to feel comfortable with that. And as a result, in addition to Open Say Ed, we're also going to look into the Gizmos platform. So that's through a company called Explore Learning. Great platform, a lot of potential there. And as of now, we're, we're set up to be able to have that available for all three grades, six, seven, and eight, throughout the year, so we can assess whether or not it's something we want to look at more long-term. The other item I want to just note is we really have to understand what this assessment looks like and what is expected of our students. And that takes time, because that process is being developed. And so we're really monitoring what is expected of these students, because DESI is providing updates, is changing the way these questions are asked, and therefore, we as educators need to adapt. And that's the core focus of our PD. And so this focus is consistent from this year to next year. The difference is we're going deeper into Gizmos and Open Say Ed. When we look at social studies, it's, it's actually very similar in terms of our approach, where we have a new assessment here, the civics assessment, the eighth-grade assessment, where you're starting to see performance tasks. Again, this is deeper questioning on one particular topic. So the through line of one particular prompt might require a student answer eight or nine questions on one set of evidence. So it's our job as educators to make sure our students are equipped and ready to take that on. And so that's been the bulk of our PD this year, where we focus on making sure our students are prepared for those performance assessments. But if you remember when I presented with Sue Foley on social studies, not just focusing in on eighth-grade performance assessments, but looking at our existing six and seven content and seeing how we can adapt that content to do so, to, to make it more performance task-oriented. And one thing I will add for next year, we are going to be exploring the Investigating History curriculum. So that's another great curriculum, but we need to get to know it, and we need to understand how that's going to prepare our students, not just in eighth grade for that civics test, but throughout each grade, elementary all the way up. And so the Investigating History curriculum right now, they've, it's finished five, six, and seven as far as what's available, and it's currently being developed for three and four as well. So next year, we're not going to focus on Investigating History for three, four, but that's certainly something that we can look at, depending on how next year goes. And again, it's all needs-based, so we have to check in with educators along the way and see what the status of things are. And then finally, I do just want to point out, as I mentioned during the summer scene presentation, we will have high school departments, high school teams by subjects, so English, social studies, science, and math, working together to make sure the curriculum map is up to date and current. And so that process will start this summer. And so we're putting teams together across both high schools to make sure that it's not just up to date, but that it's aligned throughout the city. So when it all comes together, and I should add that just the three of us presenting just covered, you know, core academics, there's a lot more. As Mrs. Papil mentioned, there's SEL PD that happens, there's, there's a variety of PD that takes place. But I wanted to include this, just so people could see the perspective of our teachers and our educators. So the image on the left, that's the middle school, that's a sample. So there's one for elementary, middle, and high school, where it's just the annual calendar of all the different PDs offered throughout the year. And so they can see kind of what's ahead, the timeline of what's ahead. And then, when you look at the image on the right, that represents just one day. So that's one day of a system-wide PD. This particular example is January 24th. And one thing I want to highlight is our differentiated approach. So if you look at that left column, we focus in on grade levels, on content areas, on positions. So we want to make sure that it is genuinely targeted PD and that it is helpful, and like, and like I referred to earlier, so that educators can walk out with tools in their toolkit. And so that's just one day, what they'll see. And typically, the way that's relayed to educators is the principals will include those in the newsletters, the staff newsletters. So this just gives them a glance of, of what the day looks like. And for all of you, you know, again, a, a annual look and also a daily look. And so we do this for all of our system-wide PDs. And I do just want to add, too, in addition to the system-wide PDs, there's principal PDs, there's assessment days, there's quite a bit throughout the year, in addition to what we just spoke about this evening. So with that, I open it up to anybody who might have questions or comments.
Ms. Perdios. Excuse me. No, a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for the detailed presentation on this. Question on science, and maybe it's a little bit more of a curriculum question, which I know this is more of a PD presentation, but
Sure.
you opened the door a little for the
No problem.
curriculum question.
Yeah.
So we use now, or at least we used when my middle kiddo was in fourth grade, a science curriculum that was not Open Say Ed. What, what is that now?
SAVIS.
SAVIS, yes.
Yeah.
And I remember during that point that there were books or a little kind of booklets, sort of on different topics, and they had differentiated ones depending on your reading level and depending on how deep or how ready you were to go further into a topic. So I'm, I'm wondering if, as you're looking at new curriculum going forward, is that a concern? Is that something you guys would like to keep? Because I thought that was really helpful, because especially at those younger grade levels, how deep you're ready to go into those, some of these topics that are actually pretty complicated once you start delving into them. And the application, some kids can take it further than other kids are ready to. And I thought that those booklets were really helpful in kind of differentiating almost on their own.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind.
Well, I mean, absolutely. As we get to know this curriculum more across different teachers at different grade levels, right? So they're all going to bring their own opinions as to, you know, what the pros and cons are. And that's an important collaborative conversation. I would say one of the attributes that we look at is how accessible is it to all of our students? And making sure, not just for students who might struggle with reading in general, but also maybe our English learners, and then, you know, if there's any sort of special-ed needs as well, making sure that the curriculum, whatever we, we move forward with, whether it be Open Say Ed or anything in the future, that is absolutely a criteria we care about. How can we make it accessible? And then, to add to that, how can we make it easy for our teachers to differentiate?
Exactly.
Yeah. And so that's where, you know, as a, as a former teacher, I certainly appreciate any administrator who says, tell me how it worked for you, right? The implementation, it might be a great, you know, ad, and you always have great presentations on it, but at the end of the day, you have to talk to each teacher to get their experience of what, was it accessible for our students? So one potential concern for this particular curriculum is, it is pretty dense. That being said, if you look at kind of the shift in the, the assessments, it's moving in that direction. And so it's our job to prepare our students for that. So I guess what, what would make sense is really to comment on kind of the outcome after we get to know it more, to see how accessible it is. But quite honestly, if we didn't feel as though it, if it were accessible enough, we'd, we'd start exploring elsewhere.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you. Yeah, I thought it was just, you know, having, you know, science especially, I think it's, it's, a student has to kind of delve into that at their level. I mean, you can talk about the weather cycle and whatnot, but some students can take it different places than others. And you wouldn't want to get some students, you know, in a place where they're kind of bored with it and, and wanting to move on and others. So I thought that was a, a program like that, that has the differentiation built in, was fantastic. It seemed like it was fantastic at the elementary level.
Absolutely.
Thank you for keeping that in mind.
Of course.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
I have one, one, one question, one, one comment. Is my mic on? Yes. Yes.
I can hear you.
My mic is not on.
Oh, it is.
It's too loud. So, I have a comment and a question. I really like that you're exploring both Open Sai and the Gizmos curriculum, and I hope that there's going to be a strong team of teachers doing that, exploring with you. Because one of the things that I love best about our curriculum plans is that it's always been collaborative, and teachers have always been a part in that decision-making, and I think that's so important, if we want to rule it out. So, I'm hoping, did we do that with piloting the investigative history? Did we have teachers involved in that before we started to pilot it?
So, this summer, we're going to put teams of teachers together for both science and social studies, to begin formal piloting of these curriculums. So, right now, it's more so anecdotal as supplemental curriculum, is what's happened with Investigating History. So, what I mean by that is an example of, there's a particular social studies teacher who's just naturally drawn to Investigating History on her own research, and she started to take some components and use it as a supplemental source. What we're aiming to do beginning this summer is saying, should this be a more structured approach? Should we be adopting this curriculum as we move forward? I don't have the answer to that, because to your point, that should be teachers really diving deep and making that assessment. So, but we're starting with both teams of teachers within those content areas, to start asking those questions, and look at the criteria that we value as we evaluate a curriculum moving forward.
Thank you. Nobody else? Okay, we're good. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's a lot of PD.
Appreciate it.
And that ends our Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting. Adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, May 15th, meeting of the Quincy School Committee Policy Subcommittee. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is Mrs. Huar is joining us. As the committee knows, we've had some routine updates on some health policy issues that we've dealt with over the last month or two, and we have an opportunity to look at the concussion policy and get some input for updates in the policy book. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I would just first like to thank the following individuals, who really had a lot of input into the decision-making on how we were moving ahead with this. We had Kevin Mahoney, the Director of Athletics, Steve Garofalo, and Brendan Gano, our high school athletic trainers, Kathy Toracco, our Point Webster Middle School nurse. I'd also like to thank Larry Tagliari, Director of Academic Programs, and all the middle school health educators, for helping to reinstate our IMPACT baseline concussion testing for all eighth graders, not just kids who are going into athletics. So, that will be really important, moving forward, if any child has concussion. What we've all decided to propose was to follow the mask policy, so to replace what we have with the mask policy that you all have in your possession. And then, we have a protocol that is updated, following what we're doing, including the IMPACT testing, and that can be published as well with this updated policy.
Would you, it's only a page, would you be kind enough just to read through it, so that the folks watching at home can know what the policy says?
So, the policy says that the purpose of this policy and accompanying protocol is to provide information and standardized procedures for persons involved in the prevention, training, management, and return to activity decision regarding student athletes who incur head injuries during the school day, or while involved in school-sponsored extracurricular activities, including, but not limited to, interscholastic sports, in order to protect their health and safety. Pursuant to the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health at 105 CMR 201, IMPACT testing is mandatory for students in grades nine through 12, who participate in an extracurricular athletic activity, in advance of their first season of participation, and every two years thereafter. The superintendent or designee will review the policy at least every two years. The protocols will be reviewed annually by the athletic department, the nursing staff, and the school physician. The athletic director or other school personnel designated by the superintendent is responsible for the implementation of this policy and protocols. This policy and protocols shall be made available to the MDPH, and to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, upon request, or in connection with any inspection or program review. The superintendent or designee shall ensure the following records are collected, verified, documented, and maintained for three years, or at a minimum, until the student graduates, unless state or federal law requires a longer retention period. Documentation of annual training of persons specified in the Regulation 105 CMR 201.007 in the prevention and recognition of a sports-related head injury and associated health risks, including second impact syndrome, utilizing department-approved training materials or program. Documentation of physical exam prior to a student's participation in extracurricular athletic activities on an annual basis, consistent with 105 CMR 200.100, Section B, Section 3. Physical examination of schoolchildren. Documentation of current information regarding a student athlete's history of head injuries and concussions, using the Department Participation Head Injury Concussion Reporting Form for Extracurricular Activities. It's the pre-participation form that the state puts out, or a district-approved form. DPH medical clearance and authorization forms or equivalents, and graduated re-entry plans for return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activities. An accurate synopsis of this policy and protocols shall be placed in the school handbook, in the health office, and on the district website. And it will, you know, be in that, the concussion protocol will be there as well.
Seems very comprehensive. Can you speak to any of the gaps that we had that this might cover? And what additional guidance, you mentioned guidance, might be sent out? If so, to whom and when?
Okay. So, this is basically mirroring what we've already been doing. The gap that was there was that, because of the pandemic, that IMPACT testing kind of dropped off a little bit. So, we've reinstated that. That started at the, we were looking at that at the beginning of this school year, and our health educators are doing that at every single school. In the protocols, it spells out what everybody is responsible for, you know, athletic trainers monitoring these kids coming back, school nurses checking to make sure that the physical exams are on file, and that when physical exams expire, that there's enough time, parents are notified, this is coming up, this is expiring, you need to get this done, we want your kid to continue playing sports. It's also monitoring these kids who have concussions, and making sure they are medically cleared to come back. I'm trying to think what else is in there. It spells out kind of signs and symptoms of concussion. It spells out, this one separates out middle school versus high school, whereas the last policy, it was just all pulled in together. So, I would receive lots of questions from middle school nurses and high school nurses that were kind of confused as to the steps, what am I doing at middle school, where there's no athletic trainer, as opposed to high school, where there is an athletic trainer. So, there's slight differences in what we do and how we follow that. For example, middle school, they have to be medically cleared by their doctor, before they fully participate back in the athletics. High school can follow the graduated re-entry, because an athletic trainer is the person trained to follow that plan.
Got it. We'll take questions from the committee members first, the subcommittee members first, and the rest of the committee. One second, Mrs. Cale. There we go.
Do we, so I'm assuming this, but if a student was playing an activity, like in a club sport or something outside of school, and they got a concussion, do we have any input in that? Like, are we required to be notified, or, you know, how does that work for? So, for an example, some, a high school student could be playing in a club team, and then come and want to play on some sport that we're offering in the school system, and they had a concussion prior, outside. Do we have anything in here that, you know, they have to notify us of that?
So, there is in there, under parent responsibilities, that parents are responsible for notifying us when their child does receive a concussion, whether it's in school or out of school. And we do keep kind of statistics of what's in school, what's out of school. When we get that notification, we do follow the process. It's a little bit different than the concussion policy, because it is, this is meant for school athletics. But our nurses do follow a protocol. We do notify, like the athletic director, hey, this kiddo had something happen outside. We maintain that line of communication, so that people are kept safe.
Would we be doing a re-entry process for a student who was coming from, we wouldn't do that?
No. So, they have to maintain their full clearance from their outside physician, whoever's following them.
And that's in here? Like, that we have that kind of?
It's spelled out in the protocol.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lebo.
No questions, just, well, maybe it's a question. I'd like to see the protocols, just at some point, if I could see them, it'd be interesting to see what they say. So, that's all.
Mrs. Perdius.
I may have misunderstood what you said at the beginning about, you said that all grade eight students are going to be IMPACT-trained or tested?
Correct, because they're required to have it prior to ninth grade. So, all eighth graders will have this IMPACT testing, which is basically a baseline of what their ability is, like cognitive-wise. And then, if they were to receive, say it was an outside sport, somebody did club sports, they hurt themselves, their physician says, well, jeez, have you had any IMPACT testing done? We're going to be able to provide that, whereas in the past, we haven't, unless they were playing sports through schools.
Okay. And that doesn't seem to be articulated here. It just seems to say for student athletes, students who participate in extracurricular athletic activity, is it?
It's in the protocols.
Okay. You don't think that it should be in the policy somewhere, or is that too specific to include there?
I think it's too specific to maintain in here. I really kept the verbiage from the mask recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bergoli.
Just a question. Protocols for, you know, re-entry, are there accommodations that are laid out in the document for teachers to follow, and parents to follow?
The accommodations are not laid out in the protocol for concussion. The accommodations are made when you meet as a team, to provide accommodations for the student who needs them, because they're very individualized, for each student. So, there's no, like, bucket list to pull from, and it's not, the protocol itself is managing the concussion itself. The accommodations are managing their academics, and that's all done through, like, the SST team, the athletic trainers, the nurses, and they all meet and discuss the academic accommodations needed, as well as the athletic accommodations.
So, does it kick in a 504, in those?
It can.
It should.
It can. You know, each individual case, like I said, we're looking at each individual case. So, there are accommodations that are being met for these kids. When they come in, they have a concussion, we send out, you know, documentation, this student should be following X, Y, and Z, these are the accommodations. So, it might not trigger an actual 504, you send out the accommodations. If the 504 is deemed necessary, we do go ahead and do the 504.
Well, a kid who's asked to take a test after having a concussion, it's unfair to the child.
Nope, they won't be asked. It's in their, it will be part of their accommodation plan in the SST.
That's what I was asking, is there something like that as a basic protocol?
There really isn't, that I've seen.
I think there should be. And parents also should know that they, you know, kids should not be looking at screens, reading, leaving their phones.
I can pull this out for you here, and the graduated return to protocol, it's really delineated at the high school level, but they can also use it at the elementary level, like stages of healing. The first stage of healing lasts 24 hours, complete physical rest, right? So, they're not doing anything but taking care of their own body, taking a shower, sitting on the couch. They're not reading, they're not, it's brain rest and healing, quiet time, rest, avoid groups, videos, reading, this might be what you're asking for. After, you know, those 24 to 48 hours, they go into this light aerobic activity, 24 to 48 hours, 10 to 15 minutes of walking. This is all related to physical activity, more than academic activity. But as you move along, you can pull in a lot of the academics.
And the trainer does those.
The trainer is the one who really does that. And then, a lot of it, we take into account anything that the doctor has written. So, if the doctor's note comes in and says, student has received a concussion, should refrain from screen time, et cetera, whatever it is, that's what they follow immediately.
There are different varying degrees of concussions?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It is not, because that is up to a physician to decide where they're at on the concussion So, it's so individualized, that you have to wait for a physician to tell you where do they fall, and what steps to start to take.
They fall within a certain parameter. So, don't, shouldn't we know the parameters?
Even for mild concussion, there's going to be things that you're going to do. And the doctor is the one who sends us the letter, who spurs us on to what steps we're going to take next. Because even a mild concussion in one person can look differently than a mild concussion in another person.
Some of my own kids had concussions, I know what you're referring to. I don't know, just, it's a, it's something that's serious, and
Very serious.
It can have long-term effects for kiddos in their adult lives. So, for us to be able to treat it properly, I think is incredibly important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergoli, Mrs. Lebo.
Now, just in follow-up to that, what actually triggers the accommodations? Is there something that triggers it, so that we all, maybe we make sure it happens?
It's the knowledge of a concussion, basically, that will trigger it. You know, we know that if a child got hurt, taken out of a game, there's, you know, things that happen, where if it happens at a game, the athletic trainers, the school nurses are all on, they have a shared document, so that they know, you know, this happened at a game, it's part of the protocol they're going to have to follow, they follow up on that kiddo. Okay, is the kid in school? Do we have a doctor's note? What are the accommodations that are needed? We need to get this child immediately into these accommodations.
The athletic director, no, the athletic.
Right. It's the athletic trainers at the middle school level, it's the coaches and the nurses.
Okay. I just worry that we could, is?
Mr. Bergoli.
A trainer's on at every sporting event.
They're not at every sporting event. Their coaches let the athletic trainers know, athletic trainers let nurses know.
So, if they suspect, if a coach suspects concussion?
They're supposed to pull them out of the game. Pull them out of the game, report to the athletic director, athletic trainers, and nurses, that get reported to from the athletic director and trainers.
In high-contact sports, usually do have a trainer there, like football, basketball, lacrosse.
Right.
Mrs. Huar, you mentioned?
They're all at games tonight, that's why they're not here.
You mentioned subsequent guidance that you'd be issuing after the policy. Is this something that you would have a discussion, or would be elaborated in the guidance, or any of that?
In the protocol?
So, we're going to, I think the appropriate motion, and Mrs. Owens, is a motion to substitute the policy, right? And so, once we adopt the policy, the communication that goes forward to all is essentially from you to the athletic director and?
This will go out to the athletic directors, the athletic trainers, the nurses. It can be posted on our website, so that parents have this information, because they need it, and it's communicated through all of those departments. Um, and it's communicated through all of those departments and amongst those departments.
Got it.
But yeah.
One more question.
One more question, Mr. Bergoli.
Uh, just, was there a change in the policy regarding, um, a revisiting of the, um, impact testing after two years? Is that a change?
That is not a change.
No.
They, I don't think so. I think they were supposed to be every two years. I don't know, um.
Now.
If the law changed, I didn't see in the old policy that it was required every two years.
That's my question.
But I, I believe Kevin had told me they were doing that.
Okay. Um, cause you have 3,000 high school kids.
Mm-hmm.
Are we impacting, impact testing every kid, whether or not they're in a?
No, it's just the eighth grade prior to entering high school. And then from that point forward, it's the kids who are involved in sports. And that's all run through the athletic department.
And if a kid his size is a junior to participate? Yeah. That's when the impact testing kicks in again?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergoli. And Mrs. Lebo.
Yep. I think you're on.
I, I have a question about if we have a kid transfer into the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, coming from a non-public school. What do we do about that?
In regards to? In regards to impact testing, if they're going to play sports, then that's what we will do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, uh, from a member of the subcommittee, I take a motion to substitute, so made by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Uh, do we need a roll call or voice?
Uh, roll call. Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We'll vote it out at a subsequent school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, the next item on the school committee policy, subcommittee agenda is the school committee policy on subcommittees. And, um, so just for a little bit of context, and, and Mrs. Owens or Mrs. Cahill or, or the superintendent can correct me, there are, for any deliberative body in Massachusetts or anywhere for that matter, um, there are a variety of laws, open meeting law, for, for instance, that dictate how we conduct our business. Many of them have subcommittees. Some of them deal with all of their business in a committee of the whole. Could be a board of selectmen with no subcommittees, could, ma- maybe there are city councils without subcommittees. And there are certainly school committees that have no subcommittees. All of their business happens in a, in a committee of the whole. I'm sure Mrs. Owens and, and Mr. Malvey know the history better than I, but, you know, for the six years that I've been on, we, we've always had subcommittees, there are a variety of subcommittees, they change. And a lot of the business happens in subcommittees. Subcommittees have limited membership, but I think it's been a tradition in the city of Quincy that many, if not all of the members attend all of the subcommittee meetings. And when I, when I served on the city council, it, it was only the subcommittee members that would attend the subcommittee meetings and deliberate the issues. And they would vote it out on, uh, to the full committee and then there would be a more robust discussion. Sometimes that's a pain because whoever is presenting before the subcommittee might have to come back before the full committee. But that, that's the way many deliberative bodies do their business here. It, it's been that. We had a recent Quincy School Committee Goals Discussion with the Mass Association of School Committees, Mr. Kuchut was there. And, uh, this, this discussion came up, how we conduct our school committees, and I don't know, Mrs. Owens, do you want to articulate perhaps how he characterized that?
I wasn't actually there.
Oh, you weren't there?
Sorry. Yes.
Yeah. Well, well, he, he essentially expressed concern about, uh, us, unless we're posting it as a committee of the whole, um, about having other members speak during that and suggested that, you know, the other members, if not posted it as a committee of the whole, would probably have to be in the audience like anybody else and really shouldn't have the opportunity to ask questions or participate in the deliberations of the subcommittee. So it begs the question tonight, are we going to do away with subcommittees and do everything in full school, school committee meetings? Or if we keep subcommittees and there's a process that we put forth, um, what would that process look like? Because sometimes there are members that want to be a participant in a discussion that's in a subcommittee of which they are not a member on. So this discussion is about how, how do we get there? And I, I do have a, I don't know if any of my colleagues have a proposal, but I have a suggestion, i- if you're open to it. So, um, the, and, and I don't know if this is manifest in the open meeting law, or if it's in Roberts' rules, or if it was in the city council rules when we were in the city council. But in order for an, an item to get into subcommittee, it would have to be introduced before the committee first. It would have to be simply on the agenda, then you refer to subcommittee. And for example, um, Mrs. Lebo asked earlier in the presentation if we could subsequently have a discussion on adjustment counselors versus guidance counselors. And so, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong. So historically, we'd, we'd hear that in subcommittee and then it would show up as a new item potentially in subcommittee. What I'm suggesting is that new i- is that not true?
No. It goes on the committee.
So it goes on the agenda, the school committee agenda?
Yes.
Excellent. So that's, that's my point. Anything that's going to get discussed in subcommittee goes on the school committee agenda, gets, and, and the discussion happens there when we have the opportunity to refer it to committee, recognizing that the committees are limited. If we're keeping the committee structure, the committees are limited to three people. Or if we want to expand that to five people for certain committees, we could debate that as well. Or if there's a particular issue that some members think is very important, we can say, hey, before you refer that to committee, I'd like to be a participant in that. Should that be a committee of the whole, a subcommittee of the whole? Or should we do that on the school committee calendar? That way, when it's introduced and is prepared to be referred, we can have that discussion as opposed to when the subcommittee agendas get posted, there are members that might be scrambling saying, hey, I'd like to have a say in that. And, and one member shouldn't reach out and say, can you, can you change that to a committee of the whole? It's just, I, I don't know if that, that's Roberts' rules or whatever, but one member shouldn't necessarily have that authority. And, and to stop taking a poll before every meeting, Mrs., you know, Mrs. Owens having to poll us all, are we all available? The discussion happens when it's introduced for referral at the full school, school committee. So I, I just pose that as one potential option. I'm, I'm open to everybody else. Do we, the first question is, do we keep subcommittees? And, and I'll, I'll open up the mics. Uh, hold on one second. Hmm. I'm trying to figure out who's sitting where. So that's my seat. Yep. Okay.
Well, let's talk about why, why are subcommittees even in place? What is the purpose of a subcommittee?
To get work done.
Right?
To get work done.
So.
And to get, and to not have to put every, I mean, our school committee meetings, to talk about what we talk about at all the subcommittee meetings, we'd go on, we'd have to have one a week. And that's.
So I, I mean, in my opinion, or what I understand, not my opinion, but what I understand is we have subcommittees, we have seven members of the school committee as a whole. And, um, I think that we're all smart enough to be able to sit and deliberate in subcommittees and bring something forward to a full committee. Then at full committees, we have a discussion on a vote of something that we have proposed to the, to the full committee. If it's, if they're not, if, if it's not, um, something that the full committee appreciates, then we don't vote for whatever the recommendation might be and we have to go back to the table. But, um, you know, that, that's kind of what I feel. I feel like as members of, and colleagues, we should have trust in our subcommittees to bring forward things that make sense for us to deliberate as a whole. So that's, that's how I understand it to be. So, and I don't know if that's, you know, um, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at, um, a, a, a proposal of making a change, but I'd need it to have it in a, in a format that I can really look at and digest, if that makes sense.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Did you want to go to Mrs. Lebo first, being a committee member first?
Go right.
Okay. Thank you. So I actually, I do appreciate your suggestion, Mr. Gatto. I think, um, I think that my concern might be, and I, I often find that where I sometimes see the agenda for a subcommittee and think, oh, well, I'd like to comment on that, that type of stuff. And I think if we had that opportunity at, at a full meeting, when that item's referred to subcommittee, to just give our initial comments to the people that might be on that subcommittee, just so you would have that knowledge or information or point of thought or wherever you, whatever you might offer, you might have that prior to your conversations. Because sometimes that might be pertinent, sometimes those members may, may not know everything about that topic. Um, and if we all had an opportunity to just kind of weigh in on those prior to the, it being referred to subcommittee, then those concerns could be talked about. And then when it comes back to the full committee, we could say, hey, did you remember, did you guys have any discussions about that particular point that I brought up? How did that manifest in what you brought forward to us? And then it's just, it kind of streamlines the process instead of us, for the first time, being able to comment after you've spoken, and then you've put in the time and effort to bring something forward that you're happy with. And, you know, there's a, always going to be kind of that hesitation of, boy, I don't really want to go back and have that conversation again because we already had it. So I think, um, getting everyone's thoughts ahead of time is great. Um, the only problem I could see with that is that not everything that comes to our subcommittee agendas is referred to subcommittee. And I'm speaking mostly about the presentations that we have. So I don't know if that might mean that all the presentations that we hear in subcommittee may need to go to the full committees and just have the presentations there.
To be referred.
Or, or the same process.
Yeah.
But they would have to be referred. So every, you know, every item would have to do that. So I'm not sure if that's going to make things really bulky, but I think we could try and see how it goes. And if there's a few things that slip through the cracks until we get it worked out.
I, I thought the superintendent and Laura just indicated that all of these items have been on the committee of the whole and referred to subcommittee, that's why we're getting these presentations.
So, so can I just, can I say one?
You may.
Thing to this, it's kind of, I guess there's two pieces to it. The, for example, the social emotional learning presentation is an item in subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
But professional development is a perpetual item. And, you know, like years ago, there was a chart developed saying that teaching and learning always reviews the school improvement, you know, the school improvement plans and the professional development plan, et cetera. So it's not a specific item on the agenda, but it's a, it's the, um, the purpose, it's the purpose of that committee is to overview those things. So technically, both of those items were in subcommittee, even though only one of them is listed on the agenda. So I guess we could alter the school committee agenda to say like, these are the perpetual items.
Yes.
You know?
And if we have to reintroduce anything and just put it on the agenda, put it in, even if we get an update once a year?
Mm-hmm.
That probably makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I, just to finish my point, I do also like it that, um, we would have that opportunity at a full committee meeting to say, hey, this issue's really important to me, it's something, you know, for instance, um, I'm just thinking about this policy subcommittee on concussions. Mr. Bergoli is not a member of the policy subcommittee, but, um, has a lot of knowledge about concussions from, you know, just all your athletics experience. And I think that might be something that if he were to see that, he could say, hey, I'd really like to be a part of that discussion. Could that be a meeting in the whole at a full meeting? And then we could just have, you know, understand why that would be an important meeting for him to be at. He could explain that, um, using you as an example. And then, you know, the body, the chair could, the subcommittee chair could decide at that point whether or not to make that subcommittee meeting a meeting of the whole. So I think that would give both opportunities. Um, so I, I do appreciate that suggestion.
Mr. Bergoli.
So I'd still like to leave it in the hands of the, the chair of the, of the subcommittee, whether or not it becomes, uh, just the three members or whether or not the subcommittee of the whole.
You see, you mean the discretion each time? Yeah. I don't know that that's fair. Um, that, that's what I'm saying. I, I think the discussion has to happen before the full school committee and, um, and, and we make a decision. And, and I think, this is just my suggestion, please critique it, that in rare instances, we keep an issue on the school committee agenda for all nine members. In episodic instances, there could be a subcommittee of the whole. Right now, we do subcommittees of the whole seemingly all the time, which, which is an issue. And then for the most part, everything's done in, in subcommittee. But then, you know, in, in the, the way it would operate is the subcommittee could meet, if Mr. Bergoli, you can't make that meeting, but you have a lot to add, Mrs. You're would regrettably come back, which you always do anyway, and you would have the opportunity to ask those questions before we voted out. So when there's seven members here in the subcommittee, that's why there's rarely debate when it gets voted out of subcommittee. It's just like a, a, a quick vote. And, and I would argue, you know, compared to the council, there are substantially more presentations without votes in the school committee than there are on the city council. So a, a lot of incredibly good, helpful, useful information that educates us on so many different things. But in terms of us being a deliberative body in the subcommittee, I, say that again?
Doesn't require.
It doesn't? Yeah. It, it, I mean, it does, it does tonight with the policy subcommittee, but there are, seldom there are, you know, votes that, that come out of subcommittee. I don't know. I'm, I'm trying to think of where else. I, I'm thinking athletics and wellness, there's probably not a lot. You know, maybe facilities, there, there could be a vote, but, Mrs. Cahill? Hold on, let me.
But to your point, you know, in terms of Mr. Bergoli, if we're in a subcommittee and we have our presentation, we have our policy, we have what we want to move forward to the full group, um, when it comes to a vote to adopt the policy, for an example, Mr. Bergoli would have his opportunity to express any of his concerns or any questions he might have. If there are some glaring things in that policy that after his discussion, we can kick it back and not accept it and then kind of revise the policy if we need to.
Or, or we could amend on the full school committee.
You know.
Correct? Like it comes out of policy committee with a certain way, but Mr. Bergoli's at, only at the school committee meeting and he wants to make a motion to amend, you can amend at that moment. It doesn't, doesn't have to go back to policy, right, Laura?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. In discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Is that you? Yep. There you go.
I think I'm Mrs. Lebo time.
Yes.
Hey, just, I know you alluded to the city council. I serve on the MBTA Board of Directors and the Mastar Board of Directors, MBTA Board of Directors. I chair the subcommittee for first development and compensation. On the other side of Mastar, I'm on the capital committee. And the whole idea with subcommittee is to get a lot of the grunt work done so we're not spending four or five hours at a school committee meeting.
Yeah.
So the question is really about, because of what was pointed out by the, the school, uh, the school committee folks. So I, I think we've got to get more disciplined.
Mm-hmm.
If, if there's some subcommittees that perhaps could be four members, like all the subcommittees, not necessarily three or four, there could be a couple of different sides that don't have to be three members.
I agree. I agree.
But I also think that, I think that the protocol would be there anyway, but if something came out of a subcommittee to the full committee and someone had a problem with it, I think if that person objected to it, I think it would stay and try to work out those issues.
I do.
There's also, you've mentioned the concussion issue with Coach Begoli. It doesn't preclude us from reaching out to a school administrator about a certain issue, let your feelings known about thoughts, or the chair of the committee about the thoughts. I don't think that's a violation of open meeting law.
Right.
So I don't want to overcomplicate it.
Nope.
I do think the subcommittee process provides efficiency, presses a body to keep things moving. And if there's something that comes up, and I always understand it all, who comes in the committee first, then subcommittee. I think that it's kind of an overreach. We're on, we're on public TV on everything anyway, but I'm not going to argue the point legally that we can't continue to do it this way. So I wouldn't change much. I really wouldn't. I think, I don't want to overcomplicate it.
Mrs. Perdios, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So one thing I wanted to ask clarification on, and one thing I wanted to suggest if we're going to be looking at this policy, kind of just from something to add to it. So for the people that are not on the subcommittee, I find it interesting to hear the conversations so that I know what's talked about. So when it comes to a full committee, I understand why certain things were worded a certain way and what went into that. So I would like to attend subcommittee meetings that I'm not on. I don't need to speak at them if that's what we all decide. I'd like to, but I would, that's totally fine if we decide not to do that. But I would like to attend them, and I just want to make sure that that's okay with, that we're all in agreement that we can attend the meetings that we're not. I mean, just as a member of the public.
I don't think violates any.
Right, right.
It's deliberation.
You're on.
I believe Mr. Kucher said-
Nope, you're not on.
You can sit in the audience, but you can't sit up here to deliberate. So I think anybody can go, but, I mean, I've been either on the school committee a long time and/or in the administration a long time, so went to many, many school committee meetings. And it wasn't always like this.
Right.
It wasn't always like this. Subcommittees did the work, and they brought it to the full committee. And I think now it's almost become pressure to be here at every subcommittee meeting because-
Everybody else.
I don't feel that pressure.
We noticed.
You're on TV.
Yeah, you're on TV. It doesn't look good if you're not here and everybody else is. That's why if you come to here, sit over there, so people don't say, we're so-and-so, because so-and-so is not on the committee. I'd feel, I'd feel fine with that. And I do, I trust my colleagues. I don't always agree with them, but I trust them.
Mrs. Perdios. And again, when it comes out of subcommittee and gets a vote, whoever's not at the subcommittee meeting should not feel intimidated not to ask questions or make a motion to change.
One to Mrs. Lebo's point, I think if we are not to sit up here, I think continuing the process that we did, I think, at the last subcommittee meeting where we didn't speak, where it wasn't a meeting of the whole, where we read off at the beginning of the meeting who the members of the subcommittee are.
Yeah.
And that, so that it doesn't appear odd that the other ones aren't here.
That's true.
So I would, I would ask that we do that.
By the way, I think they've all tuned up by now.
And then, just the other thing that I wanted to add in, I think for our standing subcommittees, I'd like to propose that we have a minimum number a year, I mean, at least one or two for each of the, if we're going to have standing subcommittees, like, I don't remember the last time facilities met. EDI, I know, hasn't met in 14 months. I think if we're going to have a standing subcommittee, because I think what happens maybe unintentionally, and probably unintentionally, is that we refer items that are important, and they kind of die there for a while until that chair is motivated, or the committee, for whatever reason or another, is motivated to make a meeting happen. But I think that a lot of these issues that we can't move out if we're not on that subcommittee so, and ask for a meeting. So I would love to put in to the policy that there's a minimum of one or two meetings per school year for each of our seven or five standing subcommittees, whatever we have here. Even if it's just to check things off the reason why we have the subcommittee. I mean, if it doesn't ever meet, then we should dissolve the subcommittee. So I would like to add in that because I get a little frustrated when we don't have meetings of our subcommittees to get that work done that's in there.
Mrs. Lebo?
I agree with that, but I think it should be one. I don't think it should be two because it might not, just one to update. Because I know we'll hear facilities when we get the report from Paul Hines about the capital improvement plan. We have a facility meeting every year about that. And we refer, we refer all those school improvement plans, but it usually comes back to us. So I know we have a lot of them, but I don't, I think one, some committees don't need more than one, like the ad hoc. Should we even have that one?
Of course. No, I just meant the standing, that our, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the number exactly of how many standing subcommittees we have. I just mean our normal ones that we have. EDI, facilities are the ones I'm thinking the most of.
I think we, I agree, we should have a minimum of one. You know, when I was in the city council, I'd just pick up the phone and call the chair of a committee and say, hey, can you have a hearing on this? Can you have a meeting on it? Can we have a discussion on it? And you try to set a date in the next 30 or 60 days to get some movement, and usually the chair's receptive, so. Mr. Begoli?
Before we start our year, don't we have a meeting-
We do.
-to clean up what's been on there for a little while?
To take out archives or-
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting.
Right.
Yeah. And then there are still items that we keep in certain subcommittees.
Correct.
But Mrs. Perdios is saying a minimum number, just to check in on those items, because we collectively chose to keep items in those subcommittees.
But the chair of those committees, they are the ones who either leave it in or take it out in that, in that organizational meeting. It's not everybody else that has input. True.
I think, I think we have, I think we discuss, you know, we go through and say, did we complete this? If it's something that we want to continue to look at, if yes, then we leave it. If not, we take it out.
The subcommittees do.
Yeah. But we do it all together, too.
But don't the subcommittees meet separately at that meeting?
No.
No.
We haven't done it that way for five years.
We used to do it that way.
Dating myself.
You're veteran.
We've done it as part of the first meeting of the year.
And we're all, we're all in that meeting. I mean, the times I've been there, it seems very collaborative, you know?
We got pizza, too.
Hey, by the way, the way the facilities goes, both the commissioner of public buildings and the commissioner of resources are required to come to the full committee once a year for an update. Sometimes that's enough, sometimes they may not be, but there is that.
And they do come.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So it begs the question, I mean, yes, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hubley.
I was just going to say another suggestion, too. If we are going to adopt the policy here, we currently have been doing, keeping the subcommittees for two years, not one year. They're suggesting one year. I would suggest that we keep the same with what we've always done traditionally and change this to two years, because that's what we've traditionally always done.
Yeah, it kind of goes with the, with the group's term.
Yes.
I agree with that.
So-
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Are you on? Yes, please.
So for the, for the next, we can have a policy meeting when we have the budget subcommittee meeting, and maybe we could share a draft that kind of integrates our current policy with the mask policy.